Motion of standing, motion carries. Please stand for the same, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendents and Allison for our annual budget hearing.
So for most in the audience, this is a repeat. But we're going to go through the whole thing. This is our official annual budget presentation, so we'll walk through all of this. Please stop us if you have any questions, if you want anything reiterated or said in a different way. This is a really important slide. Each year it changes a little bit, but each year we put this up here. Education in New York State is something that our state takes very seriously. So the money that goes into public education, you can see, is about 19% of the state budget, and that's significant. And it says that New York State values and invests in the future in education. This slide here is about foundation aid, and I think most know about foundation aid at this point. But the idea is this, this is the part of the general fund budget that as a district, we can spend as is really needed. And it's the one part of the budget that, for a long time, we saw very little increases in. And we were not fully funded, and we still are not fully funded when it comes to foundation aid. So if you look at the history here, the foundation aid was created in 2007, it was frozen in 2009. So there was a law that said you had to pay people out at this amount. But the state couldn't. And so what they started doing was keeping track of what they weren't paying districts. And that was the gap elimination adjustment. Finally, the last, last, this current school year, and now the budgeting for next school year, and the one after that, will close the gap with foundation aid. There are some school districts in New York State who are already fully funded. We're not one of them. So you'll see the numbers here in a minute, and Allison will talk a little bit about. But at the end of the 2020 to 2023, 2024 budget season, we will finally be fully funded. Okay, it's about a 4% increase for '22, '23, and then '23, '24. Any questions on that? Did I miss anything? Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, so this is just going through the $1.6 billion increase to foundation aid that the state put in the budget this year, beginning this year. So next year's foundation aid paid to the districts is either the higher of 3% of the base year foundation aid, or 50% of the difference, calculating, making each district fully funded. So in our case, the higher of the two is the 50% of the positive difference between the two, between the calculated foundation aid and what the prior year aid was. And this is just going through, again, showing that actual calculation. So the foundation aid base and what our total do would be less our base and the difference divided by two over two years, that $949,481 is larger than 3% of base, or that $659,271. So our district will get $949,481 over the next few years to then fully fund us in foundation aid.
Each of the next two years.
Right, each of the next two years.
So if, so if you look at that number where it says difference, that 1.898961, that's what is still owed to us in foundation. If they were fully funding it right now, that's what they would be giving us next year. They're not. They're saying we're going to give you half of that, so the 949481 next year, and then the other half the following year. Okay?
So this is just going through the tax cap levy worksheet again. I'm not going to go through the whole formula, but in the end, you can see that our levy limit plus exclusions is $35,614,478, or 2.57% over the prior year levy, is what we would be allowed to have with a, just a majority vote to pass. Okay, and then this looks at the tax rate comparison. So the board did approve a 1.99% increase on the levy, and taking that 1.99% and applying it to the different towns with last year's numbers, because I don't have this year's assessments yet, so it's based on the prior year assessments. And this is how it, how it calculated out. So you can see the prior year, I'm sorry, the assessed value, prior year tax rate, the estimated rate for '22, '23 next year, and then the increase would be the difference between the prior year and the estimated rate. Again, it's estimated, because I don't have all the data yet to actually plug in the actual figures, so these are estimates. And that's the rate increase/decrease per thousand, and then the average annual, and then the average monthly cost.
So as was said, the board, without a supermajority, could have gone to 2.57%, elected to go out to the voters with a 1.99% levy increase. You can see, when you factor in what's been proposed, the 1.99% for next year, for '22, '23, those six years combined, the average, and you can see it down at the bottom, is 1.725% over those six years.
So then this is just, again, looking at the actual expenditure budget review. So next year's proposal is 0.76% over the current year, so modest increase. And then the, the, the bars are actually the budget itself, and the line is the increase percent increase year to year, so.
You know, and you would ask, right, well, how are you able to keep that budget-to-budget increase as low as it is? We've constricted a number of our, our budget lines, and we've continued to do that in a sustainable way, right? So that program stays, program remains. We've been able to do that. And then that's been really important, and we always use the word sustainable.
Sure.
On this, on this slide, these are all of our revenues coming in. The, the two pieces of this that I really want to point out, in the top right-hand corner, you see the foundation aid. But you see also with the foundation aid are the other state aid categories. And as we've talked about, almost all of those there are expense-based aids. Okay, there's a few that are not. But in other words, when we, we get money back based on what we, what we expend. Some of them we get based on a per pupil expenditure, like textbook aid and that sort of thing, okay? But that, those are all of the state aid funds in that top right-hand corner. In the bottom right-hand corner, okay, tho- those are the numbers from our reserves, from the, our, whether it be our restricted reserves or unrestricted reserves. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second.
So then, looking at the expenditure budget that was on the previous slide, and subtracting that from what we know we're going to get in revenues, the difference is the amount needed to balance the budget, which would come from the reserves and fund balance.
So, so if we go back, really, if this $2 billion, the and the ERS, TRS, and workers' comp, when you add those dollars amount together, pulling them from reserves, you get the 3.344, and that's what closes the gap and makes the budget work. If you don't have those reserves to pull from, that's what you have to decide you're going to raise, right? Now, there's never an expectation that we're going to extend our entire budget. If we did, we'd extend all of those reserves because of the business office, okay, and the planning there, being prudent throughout the year with expenditures. We always have some money left over, so everything that we appropriate from our reserves is not used. Okay? Any questions on, on the reserves, how that works?
This is just showing the teacher-retirement system employer share, or whatever rate that we're required to pay on the salaries. And for the '22, '23 year, it's going up to 10.29%. And the same for ERS, this is, these are the non-teacher salary rates for the employer, employee retirement system in New York State that the employer is required to pay. And next year, that's actually decreasing from 16.2% to 11.6%. And then this is just a review, again, of our reserves, what we have as of the end of last fiscal year. So this is also taking into account what was appropriated in the current year budget. So workers' comp, we have just over 1.1 million, ERS, just over 1.7 million, TRS, we have over 579,000. Other employee benefits, which are retiree benefits paid out, that's 931,000 over that. We have a capital transportation reserve that was board-approved and voter-approved for $2 million. That is full, and we have just over $1.6 million left in that. We have a 2021 capital transportation reserve that was approved at $3 million. That's full. We have the full $3 million left in that. We have a 2019 capital improvements reserve that was approved, board-approved for up to $6 million. That's full. We have just over $4.3 million in that, and we have a 2021 capital technology reserve that was board-approved at $2 million, and that's full, and sits at $2 million. We have our appropriated fund balance at 2.2, just over $2.2 million for the current year, and assigned unappropriated fund balance at 5, 5, just over 5.9 million, which will be on the budget vote to be moved to a capital improvements reserve once, if the voters approve that. So that money will go direct to that reserve, which is set up for a $10 million balance. So this will put in just under $6 million of that $10 million. So we have 10 years to fund that fully. And then we have our 4% unassigned fund balance at just over 3.1 million, looking at a total of reserves and fund balance at $26,773,087.50.
If I could just focus on a few of these categories here, just for explanation purposes, and then for understanding of how this ties into what we do in our budget. So when you look at the capital transportation reserves, a bus is about $110,000 apiece. So we buy about seven buses, eight buses a year. So you figure if we buy seven, that's $770,000. If we buy eight, that's $880,000, right? So those, you can see how quickly those, those dollar amounts diminish. It's why we have multiple funds. Here's what's important. You would look at that, and you would say, do they not know the math? Because it says $2 million. It says full, but there's only 1.6 there. Full means we've filled it all the way once. Then you spend down. You can't put more money in. When you establish the reserve, $2 million reserve, you can fill that up to $2 million. Once you fill it up to $2 million, then you start extending from it, okay? But you can't put more money in once you expect to put it back up to $2 million. You have to start a new reserve. That's why you see different year reserves. The 2018 transportation, then you see the 2011, or 2021, excuse me, reserve. That's just my mistake. Same thing, if you look down at the bottom, left-hand corner, the capital improvement reserve, it says up to 6 million. It says full. Well, that means that about 1.63 million has been already expended from that reserve. So that's why we've established another one. Putting the capital funding reserve in perspective, it's a little over 20% that we paid, '22? 21. something, '22? Okay, so 20% is an easy number for me to do calculations on. So if we had another $30 million project, like we have currently going now, 20% of that is excellent, $6 million, okay? So you did the whole $6 million, I said it at the same time. Six, $6 million. Think about this. If we take that number where it says assigned unappropriated fund balance and create, which is what we're asking to do, another capital improvement reserve, that's about $6 million. That would allow us with those funds to do another project for $30 million. Okay, we are in the planning process right now of doing a project. The 4.371, we're expending down with our current capital project right now.
And this is just reviewing the budget propositions that you'll see on the budget vote. So the first is obviously the adoption of the budget and the budget amount. The second is to authorize expenditures from a capital transportation reserve in the amount of $810,000. And that is to purchase buses for the district. Number three is authorize an expenditure from a capital technology reserve of $800,000, and that will provide actually two years of devices for students. We're doing it in advance so that we can get the devices set up for the following school year. Number four is the authorization establishing, establishing a capital improvements reserve fund in the amount of $10 million.
This slide's here, it's at the end, it's a really important one. If you go back to the 13, 14 year, we were the most physically stressed district in New York State, because of the work of the board and the business office, or, and then a lot of sustainable planning. We went from the most physically stressed to a zero rating when it comes to physical stress. It's one of the few categories, a few times, you ever want to be called a zero. This is a good time to be, to be, okay, with fiscal stress. Not on here is the budget vote for elections, May 17th, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM here in the high school ALC. Any questions? You're probably all thinking I could have gone up here and done that, because I've heard it so many times.
Question again. What is the state's concern? Like, we'll talk about the bus fund. Why do they make it, you know, say we spent a million, why didn't we just put a million? Why do they make us go through all?
All in purposes, I think easier to track, that you've filled it up, you've extended it. You only have so many years to extend it, right? So that you're not just holding money for long periods of time.
And on top of it, it's a voter-approved. All capital reserves are voter-approved. So you, the voters approve a certain dollar amount, so we couldn't just say we're going to spend it and refill it, because it's actually not what they approved. That, that's more than what they approved. So they make a split amount so that the voter knows what's being approved and where the money's going.
Easier to track, right? Because, because they could leave it open, and then have you, have voters approve it again and put it, but it's just, I think it's just a cleaner, it's, it's cleaner for them to track it. So. Other questions? Thank you.
All right, there's one signed up for the motion for. So we buy two art sense agenda items.
So.
The resolution for the IPA for computer services, which does not meet consensus of it. A question I had with that, is that what's passing through our managed services fee for OJ's?
No, this is. This is an IP. This is an IPA for computer services, which I believe are the purchasing of network printers throughout the district. So we go get into an agreement with most of that needs order.
Any other questions? All those in favor of a group that exists agenda, please say aye. Aye. Motion of standing, motion carries. Personnel items, call for motion. Personnel items as submitted.
I would like to add a walk-on item to that, that was not done the last meeting when I was not here, is the, the extension and amendment to the superintendent contract. I'm just going to add it on. So we'll add that as item number nine on here. Any questions on any of the items, anything to discuss? Are all those in favor then? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion of standing, motion carries. Outstanding committees, policy, anything? Okay, capital project?
June. It's an important one. June 13th.
Yeah.
June 13th. Four, four o'clock. Before o'clock.
All right, we have some fundraisers as informational items. Let's sit here. Ex-official student members report.
I just wanted to say, on the budget vote, the national college program, it's also having a try for a music program. You want to, or you can buy at the door at $15, and the switch lets your underwear.
If any of you are looking for tickets, I am selling too.
Because, so, you know, you can always message me and Venmo me if you want. Okay, someone has to explain to the superintendent what Venmo is.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I was going to have you come look on my phone, and it just.
He was looking for the new social media app. Superintendent's report.
Okay, if we could, I want to just show some, a few pictures from this past weekend. I think most of you know that this past weekend, we had two events that fall under our engagement goal and are part of our, the work of our CDEP committee. I'll have Mr. Stack talk a little bit about the second one. But the, the first one was our ECO Campus project, and it's actually our sixth biannual. Been a little interrupted because of COVID. We would probably be at, I think, number eight now, by, by now. But we've, we've had six, and what's really neat is that we've had some of the same faces every single time. We've had some that have been missed that have been there almost every single time. But we, we had between 40 and 50 individuals that showed up that day to help. It was, it was really a phenomenal day. It was one of the few nice weekend weather days, perfect for doing work. If, if you want, we could, maybe afterwards, talk about who was more sore, myself or Allison. But it was, it was, it was quite a day. It was, it was a great day. So you can see, here's one of the pictures of all the kids. I, I want to give credit to Mr. Pat Kramer, Patrick Kramer, at the middle school. He has really taken an incredible leadership role with this project, does a great job. One of the grants that he wrote for and received actually allowed us to do a lot of the plantings at no cost. You know, we were able to plant trees back along Cave Creek, up by the makeshift classroom that's up on the hill. And there was actually a row of them put on the, what would be the east side of the, of the middle school, that, you know, in about 50 years, will provide some shade over there, but, you know, some seedlings were planted in a, in a nice row there. And I do want to thank also Greg Phillips and our, our entire facilities department. We, we had some, some help from them that, that day, but also prior, getting all the resources that we needed for the work that was done. If you could just click through, I'll just talk a little bit about this. At the beginning, you, you can see in the back, we did a little presentation of what the day was going to look like. You can see the sign, a few people standing in front of Niagara County Central Rotary has been a big part of this event since its inception. It was actually some of the leaders of that group who, who helped start this, this program for us with the Niagara River Greenway Commission. And then some of the first funding dollars that actually came through this program started from that group. Here, although you can't see it, you can kind of keep clicking through. You see in the back there, Mr. Carter, who's a member of Rotary, what was there, helping out as well. Here, neat picture, as a true teacher, Mr. Kramer was walking through all the processes, the processes that you have to go through to plant the seedlings. So the, the students walked out, and they went through all of the different steps to, to plant these seedlings, to protect them, and did a really great job showing the kids how, and then was working with them in that area. Again, a great day. In the front, some of us have moved to the front and worked on some of the beds right in front of the middle school. There's still some work there that needs to be done, but it really looks nice there now. A couple of the beds are pretty much complete. There's a couple more that were, were weeded, but need to still be mulched. And there were, you know, four, four senior high school students who were helping a few of us adults. You know, would that work there? They didn't make fun of us too much every time we stopped and groaned, so that was very nice of them. But again, it was, it was a really great day, great projects. As a matter of fact, one of our middle school teachers took a, a group of students, and they were the ones who planted all of the seedlings on that east side of, of the middle school. So overall, it was a fantastic day, and right after this event, here's the segue. If you could, the next, next slide here. Was the second annual, right? Wellness Walk for Suicide Prevention. If you could, you go through the pictures, and Tom can talk a little about this event and how successful it was.
So as an offshoot of CDEP committee, the wellness committee certainly has been able to put together a focus on district-wide wellness and community wellness the past two years. Some of you may recall, last year, we did the 5K walk run, as well as a hiking challenge. And this year, we wanted to really celebrate our campus, the work that's been done out back, as well as celebrate everybody that participated at ECO Campus by coming to join forces a little bit with the Honor Society, National Junior Honor Society as well, and bringing some of our wellness committee members right here to campus, and opening it up to our entire school community to celebrate walking twice around the campus to see the verification work, as well as some of the new seedlings and plantings, as well as just celebrate our campus as a whole. And it was tremendously successful. The group that we chose to fundraise for was the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And to my understanding, we were able to raise $8,000 for that organization. So it's really kind of a tremendous feat. I certainly have to give a ton of credit to, to Kara Kirk, who's done a great job with so many things this year. But certainly, one of those things that we're most proud of is her work, not only with the students and the families and community, but her coordination of the honor societies as well. And just as a, as a side note, you know, I was able to, to be there last night to help celebrate the general honor society members, and it was a great turnout by our parents, and, and of course honoring our students. So a really positive day on Saturday, and again, the second really positive annual walk slash one. So we're hoping to continue that in the future where our committees work.
I, I didn't see a final count, but I think that, that day, they were looking at maybe 50 to 60, somewhere around there.
Yes, yes, some, right? Yeah, it does.
Some, some of the students who participated, and the staff who participated in the ECO Campus project, and community members who participated, because we've got some families who have been doing the ECO Campus every single year. But some of those exact same people stayed and did the walk as well, so it was a really nice day. So, you know, we have about 40 to 50, and then, you know, 50 to 60, so it was a really nice day. Couple others, just one more to fit under CDEP and engagement. On May 20th, that is a Friday, does that sound right? Okay, good. Does that sound right? Okay, good. Fri- Friday night, we have the elementary district wide family movie night. So it's for all elementary families. Popcorn water will be provided. It'll it's an out it's planned for outdoors, but we'll move indoors into the auditorium if for some reason, you know, weather. Isn't friendly on that day, that night. If we we've told families, if you have elementary children, but you also have like, you know, middle just middle school students, need to bring them along, of course you can. Okay, but again, it's it's the focus is for elementary students, the. Also that day, I just want to mention, there is additional engagement activity that high school is putting on, and it's a volleyball tournament. That volleyball tournament, other student teams that are being made up, I think it's juniors and seniors, right, for juniors and seniors. The there's also staff teams, there's Lewiston Police Department teams. And there's an administrative team, or maybe I think I think even two administrative teams that that have been set up. They had to set up the second administrative team because some administrators said, you know, if they were in the game, they weren't going to come out, they weren't going to sell. So. I might have been wrong, but anyway, no, we we have two teams. It should be a lot of fun and what a what a great. You know, school spirit event that that day, and I know we're we're looking forward to it, I think, as much as the kids. I think the idea is that the adult games will start off today, so. You know, I'm expecting that the administrative team, if we're the ones who play Lewiston Police Department, will probably win. I'm just, that's just my guess, just from what I've heard from some of the pundits out there. Let let last but not least, everybody knows food service is free till the end of the school year for all of our students. Both breakfast and lunch, and that'll go through the again the end of this school year. That's all I have.
Any questions, the superintendent's report? You do know volleyball uses hands, not your feet, right?
And you know that that has actually been amended over the years. You can actually use your feet in volleyball these days. You never could. So you know, I mean, this is this is good. I have a chance.
Well, knowing how you played soccer, I I wanted to give your team a chance that so you didn't try to that, so.
Gosh.
And we beat you, remember?
Are you a striker or not?
Um, all right, we have no reports to the board. Any ideas for board discussion right now? All right, any old business? Any new business? I'm just, I have one thing to bring up in in that piece, just so you know that. If you do come to any sporting events, the superintendent has had spoken about parking for board of ed members, that you you are able to go into the back and park in the back. We want to make make that piece known for people.
Yeah, if you're bopping in to see some event and you know, I go back there quick to see something, just let them know at the gate, so you can go back there and see for a few, for you know, and then. I I think it's certainly an important thing.
Any other new business? All right, public comments? No, nothing? Or member comments? Uh, just real quick, it's again, the the chicken chicken dinner sale for music parents group, please make sure that you. Do mention that to your neighbors and friends and so on, because it's a fifteen dollars a dinner. All right. If no other comments, I have to call for a motion to adjourn. Moving second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion abstaining, motion carries, we are adjourned.